Tom, did you get a haircut?
I did.
I didn't tell.
This morning, like at 7:00 AM this morning.
It's 7:00 AM. Today's my haircut day, too. I feel like it's Christmas.
Okay, we're ready. Aaron, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Chairman, we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning. We have four issues to kind of go through at staff this morning. First, I'm going to just take a minute or two to kind of give an update on what's been active on the website regarding some COVID data. Tanya will get up and talk for just a couple of minutes about a memo that went out yesterday regarding the reopening, a limited reopening of the courts for next week. And then on the agenda tomorrow, we will be talking about the remainder of the building. Tanya will present during the meeting tomorrow. Then we'll roll into our Health Department discussion regarding COVID. Adrian will be remote and will talk. Tim is here in person. We'll talk about testing. And Rusty will be remote and be talking about PPEs. And we'll have discussion there. And then the last item is a discussion on the pug mill, which we had talked about in CIP briefly last week. And David Spears and Jim Weber both, I think, are here in person to talk about that. And I think they'll have a presentation with some data. So just very quickly, this is the front end of the website. And if we look under the, you can see kind of the layout here is the Sedgwick County Health and Economic Recovery Plan. Here is some of the governor's recovery and reopening of businesses information. And then third on the list here is Sedgwick County COVID data. And there are four slides that as we go through the next several months and businesses reopen and we move through the various phases of the governor's plan, there's four slides that I think we need to pay close attention to, which will give a good status for the Board of Health regarding how we are faring in Sedgwick County. And the first slide is this one. It is the bar graph which shows all of the testing we do. And of all of the testing we do, how many of the tests are positive? And then it runs a graph for you. So you can see that at the end of April, we had hit, we were doing anywhere from 100 to 150 tests over a few days of time. We were hitting about 11, 10, up to 13% here in early April of the total number of tests that we were doing and how many positives we were getting. You can see as we trend into May, a couple of things. First of all, we're doing a lot more testing. You can see some of the numbers here that hit several hundred. But you can also see that we are not seeing as many positive cases of the tests that we are doing. And remember, we're testing right now symptomatic people only. They have to meet one of the two criteria. So this is a good graph to watch. It'll give you, it gives you kind of a snapshot of how many tests we're doing and how many positive cases we're doing, and then the ratio.
Sedgwick County.
Okay. Tom, could you repeat so for the public? It's sedgewickcounty.org.
www.sedgewickcounty.org.
Right. There's people get confused. Sedgwick.gov, sedgewickcounty.gov. It's sedgewickcounty.org.
Correct.
Thank you.
The next slide, the second slide down is also an important one to watch. This talks about hospitalized cases by the week. And it'll be a rolling graph. And you can tell how many patients go into the hospital. And then we threw this little graphic onto the side here. Every Monday, we talk with HCA and Ascension and the VA. And we kind of just get a qualitative draft of what they're seeing, how many patients they have, the availability of vents, the availability of ICU rooms, et cetera. And they kind of give us a qualitative, hey, we're in good shape, or, you know, we've seen some numbers that are troubling. So we created this little graphic here that if everything is well on the Monday that we check in with the hospitals, we give it a good sign, that will go to a yellow and ultimately a red if the numbers begin, or if the news that we get from the hospitals becomes worse. So this is a good graphic to watch, not only on hospital population, but also the status of the hospitals. Another graph, let's skip this one. This is the active cases in the community, which I think we should watch very carefully. And as long as we are flatlining here, we, you can see since early April, we're running 150 to 200 active cases within the community. Some add, some drop off as people get over the symptoms. So this is another good graph to watch, one of the four that we want to keep a close eye on. And then finally, let's skip through another couple here. We created this graphic at the end to just kind of get a qualitative track of how many PPEs we were short of or what we needed. And this is basically, green means good. You have what you need. Yellow means we are, we have enough for the short term. And red means we need to be acquiring more. So this is a good graph to keep track of because we said that the number of tests, the hospital information, PPE availability and testing availability are all critical as we move through the next step. So this is just another graph we created. We're going to create a similar graph to this regarding testing. We're developing that and talking about the development of that now. And then the other thing that we want to keep track of is the number of deaths in the county. And we need to create a graph for that at some point as well. And I, last, yesterday, we stood at 20. We've been staying at 20 for the last several days. So we're going to try to figure out how to, how to graph and keep track of that. Just another graph that we added this week is the one regarding demographics. It allows you to get into the infection and see how it's impacting people by race, gender, and age. So it's just kind of, I don't know that it's critical that we need to watch this on daily basis, but it gives you more of the total data picture of what's going on with the virus. So if you haven't been on lately, check it once a week or so. And for the public, we recommend the same thing. You can watch the same graphics we are watching as we try to manage through the next several months. So with that, any questions?
Tom, very good. I'm just checking it out on my phone as well because I'd heard that maybe it wasn't available by iPhone yet, but it looks like.
I think when I logged on this morning, it looked like it was.
That was really fast because I asked for that yesterday. And so thank you for being so quick, whoever did that.
This is good information.
Very good.
Really good information. And kind of accurate to date, so to speak.
It comes from KDHC. So yeah, it will lag a day or two, but it should be up to date. And it gives us a good longitudinal study of what's going on with the virus.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that helped work on this to put this in the site. Thank you very much.
I have one final question.
Yes.
So the map of the zip code map, is that something that we can add?
Yeah, we're going to work on that. We've already seen a development of one. I saw one a couple of weeks ago. And as the numbers continue to increase, that, that map will give us meaningful data as well. And we'll put it on the demographic site. It begins to show where physically in the county.
Okay.
Okay.
Tanya is going to talk about.
Thank you.
Opening of course.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As the manager mentioned, I will be back tomorrow to talk about reopening of our county facilities. But I did want to mention that the 18th Judicial District did put out a release yesterday stating that the courthouse will be open starting May 26th, which is Tuesday after Memorial Day. And the highlights of the release that they put out is that the court will have court hearings, and that will be by appointment only. And when they do open the courtrooms, they will only have 10 people per courtroom. And again, that will be by appointment only. They will have no jury trials until further notice. Traffic court is not planned to resume until June 15th. And the district court is still encouraging the public to continue to do business with the court remotely. And so that includes marriage licenses, protection orders, and to sign up for parenting classes as well. I did want to mention that the courthouse police will be screening every member of the public coming in to both the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse with screening questions. And we reviewed that with Dr. Menz as well as the Supreme Court of Kansas. Those that don't pass the screening will be given instructions on how to reschedule their hearing if they do not make the screening. Once passed the screening, every person will, who is not wearing a mask, will be provided a mask to wear in the facility. So both the main courthouse and the juvenile courthouse complex. I would, I also want to mention that Facilities has worked with district court to make sure that they have adequate cleaning supplies to disinfect and sanitize the courtrooms after each use. And as well as juvenile courthouse, we are working with them to utilize a custodial vendor during the day to clean, disinfect, and sanitize the courtroom. So I'd be glad to stand for any questions and discussion. And as I mentioned, I will be back tomorrow with a longer, further discussion on reopening county facilities.
You said if they don't pass the test, are you going, are we going to give them a place where they can go get tested? Are we going, I mean, if they don't pass the screening?
The screening, yes. Yes, we will give, the courthouse police will give them instructions on, on what to do to reschedule their hearing.
I mean, but to go get tested, if they're, they don't pass the screening, then they can't come in the courthouse and they probably need to get tested. Are we going to be actively giving out information as to where to send those people? Do they, do they need to just call 211?
We can, we can add instructions on there as well.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yes. Yep. We can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The prisoners that are coming over from jail, are they tested over there before they come, or do we screen them as they come into the courthouse?
That's, I don't know. On that procedure, do you know?
I think they're going to be screened as they come into the courthouse. I don't think they'll go through the front. There's two avenues for people to get into this building. The public access will be the east side. It'll be a single point of entry. And then when the sheriff brings something over, they'll go through the same screening. And let's define screening here. It is a series of questions that we ask the person. And then if they answer those questions appropriately, they allow, the courts allow them access to their facility. So they'll go through that process on the sheriff's side and have worked that out between the courts.
And both the doors, they have way to take temperatures and so forth?
We are not taking temperatures, sir. No.
You're not?
No.
All you're doing is screening.
We're asking questions. That's the definition of screening.
Okay. Then that is adequate? We've run that by our Health Department?
We've run it by Dr. Menz. The, let's talk about temperatures for a second. We, going into summer, there is some question, maybe Tim can hit on this a little bit too when he hits the podium, there's some question of reliability. When you come in from a 95-degree day and we hit you with the external forehead scan or whatever, you're going to be hot. And our fear is that we're going to get so many false negatives, we're going to jam it up. So at this time now, we can change this at any point. At this time, we are not planning to take temperatures on the way in.
Okay.
I'm saying we can, can't change your mind.
And we're talking about opening this building up. So how far does that go? You're just talking courts right now, but I think we need to start opening up. I'd love to come back to work. And I think that most of the commissioners would love to come back to work. We need to open up our facilities so that we can start having things like bid boards again and doing the functions that we do day in and day out. When are we going to do that?
Tanya will present that tomorrow. You will see that we are having some openings as soon as next Tuesday. We'll be phasing that in over time. But a good portion of, well, courts will be, as Tanya just described, limited opening. I think that the row offices are planning on a limited opening next Tuesday. So you'll begin to see quite a bit of opening of buildings, at least in juvenile courthouse and in this courthouse next Tuesday. And over time, Reagan, Historic, all the other corrections facilities, you begin to see over time, all of those will begin to open. With distancing and signage and some level of screenage, mask application, those types of things, that's how we will be doing business for the next several months.
Okay. So you're going to give us timeline on when we can start?
Yes, she will provide that tomorrow.
And that's tomorrow?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I do agree with Commissioner Dennis. I think that it would just be helpful to get thermometers. I mean, I went to the gym yesterday. When I walked up, they took my temperature, external thermometer. When I was at the mall the other day, they took it. I just feel like it'd be consistent for us to get some external thermometers and take those. I think that's the easiest way to screen for COVID, if we can do that.
So is, like the MAPC, they've been meeting, they're going to be meeting today, I think, or this week via Zoom. Is bid board, can bid board not meet via Zoom? Can we not?
To Commissioner Dennis's point, I think we could look at some type of operational meetings with, I'm not sure what MAPC is exactly doing. I'm sure they're doing distancing or requiring masks of all participants. I'm not sure what they're going to do. But it would be with the protocol that we see fit as most safe for this building. But absolutely, I think we should start some operations next week.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I'm just curious, do we, what are we looking for next week that we don't have this week? What's our criteria to start this next week? Why, why, why that date? Is there something that's actually driving the conversation that says, this is not a good week, but next week's a good week? What's different next week versus this week or two weeks from now? What are we looking at specifically that's driving this policy?
Well, many things. First of all, we have been in dialogue for the last month with the courts and with departments about certain things that have to happen before we feel, that we need to do before we can safely open. Things like signage, Plexiglas placement, proper PPEs. Honestly, and I've just, I've been on the websites for the last couple of weeks, just recently have you been able to get masks, for example? This is a fairly new phenomenon. So once we got to the level, and in our dialogue with the courts, they're being told what to do by the Supreme Court of the state of Kansas. So screening was a component, PPEs and cleaning, those were all components that were driving the ability for the courts to open. And very recently, we feel like we have enough masks now and we have our signage in place by that magic date on the 26th or whatever next Tuesday is. Those were the things that we were just trying to check off to get to before we thought we could safely open the building. So that's the significance of that date. We had a visit with Judge Garing just a few days ago. I think he gave it some thought, maybe about this week, but we didn't know if we had enough masks and we'd had to go with temporary signage. We think we'll have all of our permanent signage in place by next Tuesday, Tanya?
Yes, this week.
Correct. So those are the kinds of things that just kind of fell into place, which began to have us circle the 26th of the date.
So you guys mentioned things like Reagan building for a moment there. So do we have, I guess, a list of things that have to be done before that building gets back to being open as much as we possibly can open it? I mean, do we have a, who's tracking this list of what needs to be done to open each building? Do we have that somewhere?
We have that. We have that list of the four things, the four criteria that the managers just mentioned. So we have the sneeze shields. We have the proper cleaning equipment. We have the signage is one. And then I'm trying to think of what the fourth one is. It's signage, sneeze shields, cleaning supplies, and then the PPE. So we have the masks for employees as well as the public.
And the difference between here and Reagan, for example, is we have a security force in place that the screening component can take place right then at that point of entry. At Reagan, we don't have that component. So we've had dialogue with every department head in the county and every elected in the county on their preferences, what they felt like they needed to safely open. Reagan, we prioritize the courthouse here because of the presence of the 18th Judicial District and the juvenile courthouse. Reagan and Historic and some of the corrections facilities were second, but we are in dialogue. That's why we're going to phase this open. I don't know that we have enough PPEs to crack everything open. By next week, we might. But those, that's the kind of discussion that's ongoing right now to try to get departments comfortable to where they can have public come back in and, and keep the public safe when they do come back in.
Well, for example, we're, we're not screening people when they go to restaurants or when they go to a retail shop. The screening's not happening there. People are, people are accessing those places throughout our community. So for example, the election office is another great example, especially with an election that's brewing right now. I would think that they would want to have, you know, public access to that as soon, as soon as possible. I don't know that screening is needed. I think obviously we have to have risk mitigation and things in place, the cleaning supplies and the shielding if that's what's needed. And the masks obviously would be, would be necessary. But once those things are available, we need to get those, those offices open as soon as possible. So I, again, I don't know about picking an arbitrary date in the future. If we have those things today, we need to lean forward and get them open as soon as possible. I mean, there's nothing in the data that we've seen today that causes us to say we need to open later on because the risk out there in the community is something that we were scared of. The only, the only thing that's keeping these offices from opening right now are the things you just mentioned. And if we have them, we need to open as soon as possible. And I don't know, picking a date in the future is, it just sounds a little arbitrary to me. I would say as soon as we have those things in place, we need to get those offices open, especially the election office, for example. So I appreciate the caution, but I really think that, and it's great to have some planning if we know when we're going to have that stuff in place and that's the date that, that's the date we open because we have the things in place at that date. That's, that's good to know. But it seems a little arbitrary that on some date in the future that all of a sudden everything opens up or some things are still not open and, we're kind of picking these dates arbitrarily. I don't know if that really makes sense to me or not, but thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything arbitrary about this. I mean, we have to set a timeline. We have to be able to do this with caution. And I think that's exactly what they're doing. So, I mean, to sit there and tell, tell, and say that they're doing it arbitrarily, they're just picking dates out of the air. I just want to commend you guys for being cautious and doing everything that you can for being diligent about your efforts. I think that that's something that we should be very proud, that we have people in our community and people that work for our county that are tanking all of these precautions and not just doing it as quickly as possible because the virus isn't going away. We're opening this, we're opening things up because of the economy. The virus is still here. We have to act like that. So I just want to commend you guys for your efforts. I think that you're doing, everything is going very fast. I think you're doing things as quickly as possible, but I mean, there's only so much you can do so quickly. So thank you for, for being diligent in your efforts.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. One, one small note. I think, Tom, you were, I think a couple of news medias are misquoting. There's no, there's no courts open today, correct?
That's correct. They do not open until May 26th.
Some of the media this morning were, from your meeting yesterday, were saying, you said Tuesday, so some are saying courts are open today based on, based on, based on appointments only. So it's, I mean, if anybody's calling, they may have wrong information, but it is officially Tuesday after Memorial Monday. So thank you for the public.
So are the folks that, because I, I drove up the other day and there was a guy who was asking about whether, you know, the courts were open. So how, how are they communicating? I don't want people to be nervous that they're going to miss their court date. I think that that, that could be a real fear. So is that something that they're communicating to folks about court dates that have been pushed back?
I think that the, the courts are communicating with those folks. And I think they're also putting stuff out, out on their, their website as well. And, and they're working with our communications department as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Good luck with everything.
Okay, next up. We have Health Department report. I guess it's.
Adrian's on the phone? Morning, Adrian. You can unmute yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Chairman, you'll have to turn it up. We cannot hear you. I need to turn you up.
You can not hear me.
I'm turning you up. Test, test. One, two, three. Tanya?
Am I on yet?
I think Tony's coming, sir.
I got it.
Good morning.
Adrian.
Can you hear me?
She's on WebEx.
Standby, public.
Okay, Kate, can you hear me? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Adrian.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. As reported by John Hopkins, Kansas has 8,340 cases of COVID-19. And Sedgwick County has a total of 536 cases. We have a total of 362 recoveries from COVID-19 and 20 deaths. We provide daily updates on the decimating number to the public and on our dashboard. If you're currently ill, please call 211 to begin the process of being scheduled for an appointment. We have plenty of staff to take care of anyone that calls. If you called during the day, we can get you in the next day. So please call if you have any symptoms whatsoever. Expanding on what the manager mentioned earlier, the Health Department has added additional information on the data dashboard related to testing demographics. We have the data for all people tested in Sedgwick County, data related to who the Health Department tested, and demographic data related to confirmed COVID-19 cases. KDHC will only now share updates related to clusters once a week. There are currently 95 clusters across the state, more than 4,000 cases associated with these clusters, and 127 deaths associated with them. There are a total of 10 clusters in Sedgwick County, three churches, three long-term care facilities, three businesses, and one correctional facility. A cluster is defined, two or more non-household COVID-19 cases identified in a certain timeframe and place. Because the nursing home clusters are contained within each facility and not a risk to the public, ongoing details are shared by cluster type. The overall results for the entire group provide adequate public information for study. Long-term care officials have been transparent with the residents, staff, and families at their facilities. There's no public health benefit to the dissemination of information at a more specific level. There is a confirmed COVID, if there's a COVID, confirmed COVID-19 case in any long-term care facility, we reach out to the facility officials to test all residents and staff for COVID-19 at no cost in order to determine the spread of the disease. Cumulatively, 26 cases are associated with the church clusters, 129 cases are associated with the long-term care clusters, there are 25 cases linked to the business clusters, and 53 cases related to the correctional facility cluster. Only one of these clusters posed a risk to the public, that was the Mel Hamilton Ford cluster, where we put a news release out to get people to call in who had been there at a certain date and time. Clusters are considered active until all cases have been recovered for two consecutive 14-day periods. Then it's closed. Right now, one of our church clusters has closed and a few more are set to close at the end of this month, at the end of this week. As we move into Phase 1.5, we recommend that residents continue to practice social distancing, continue or consider wearing a mask when in public, particularly in stores, especially shopping where social distancing may be a challenge. Wash hands frequently and keep hands away from your eyes, nose, and mouth. That is my report.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Commissioner Dennis has a question?
Yes, thank you. I've got several questions. The first one is probably for Mr. Papoon, actually, but it deals with this. I got a phone call yesterday from a lady that said that she's heard that Kansas is requiring waivers. And I did talk to Mr. Papoon a little bit about it, but I just wanted him to let us know so that it gets out the word that there is no required waiver, from what I understand. But if a business wants to have some type of waiver, it's up to the business. So would you like to expand on that?
Certainly, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. Commissioner Dennis, there's nothing in any of the governor's orders dealing with waivers. Private business can always require masks, require waivers, do whatever they want. There's probably certain information like social security numbers that a business couldn't ask a patron to give out as far as information, but there's nothing requiring a waiver by either the county or the governor's office in this kind of a matter, so.
Very good. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure the whole, all the public got that information that, that came out yesterday. My next question, I also received a phone call yesterday from a gentleman that's setting up a huge conference here mid-September. 1,500 people from across the United States and possibly some from overseas will be coming to Wichita mid-September. He's going to invest over $300,000 to get this set up. And his question, and that's what I need to talk to Adrian and the Health Department, what kind of guidance can we give him when he's getting ready to invest this amount of money and it has this big of an impact on Sedgwick County? If, if you want to know what the conference is, it's the multi-tier system of support. It's something that the State Board of Education started implementing back when I was on the It's something that the State Board of Education started implementing back when I was on the State Board, and they're going to have educators from around the country here. So I need to know what kind of guidance we can give him as he's planning on whether or not to hold this conference, because we're going to have more questions exactly like this in the near future as we try and open up. Adrian, you got any advice?
Hi. If you would send me his information, I would be glad to walk through possibilities and things for him to think about, as I've done with others, and/or could write some of the stuff for you, but it would be helpful to know some of the details from him.
Okay. After this, I, I will send you an email with his contact information and if you'd get a hold of him. But at the same time, we need to take a look and find out, we're going to have more and more of these, but we want to try and open up. So we need to get some guidance out to the public on what they're going to start looking at.
On these large, on these events and large things coming in, I can tell you, I'm on about twice a week, phone calls with Susie Santo about a number of all kinds of events, and I would assume this kind of event would be, and Susie's in constant contact with Adrian, and they're addressing each of these events individually and providing guidance, and September's tough to predict right now, but they try to give them parameters on, and then it depends on what kind of deadline that person needs to say, hey, we need to know by this day if we can go or no go, including events that AJ's having at Interest Arena. So I would recommend when you send that information to Adrian, you copy Susie Santo with Visit Wichita, because Susie and her staff are all over this with hotel rooms and, and all kinds of calendar dates and stuff. So I think that'll be helpful.
I specifically asked him if he'd been working with Visit Wichita, and he said he had not. He's evidently set this up for a number of years and didn't go through them. I suggested maybe he might want to.
I think it'd be, she's a good source, and she's working closely. Adrian, right, you're, you're working closely with Susie on a lot of things, aren't you, on that?
Yes, and one of the things that I ask event planners is what their, their drop-dead date is for deciding, because we know how much this continues to evolve and things that we learn, and that, that helps at, at times to, to learn what that, that last date is, that they, their end date for when they have to either, they have to make one decision or another, and that sometimes gives us a little bit of wriggle, or not much, but it could be as much as, you know, two or three weeks, and we know with COVID-19, two or three weeks can be a long period of time.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to change gears with you just a little bit and I want to start talking about testing. I have, I have some concerns about testing. If, you know that I sent Tim and Adrian and Tom a couple different links on antibody testing, and I guess, I don't know if Tim wants to address this. Do you want to go up to the podium and I can ask questions directly of Tim?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Tim. My biggest question, I, I sent you two different pieces of information about antibody testing, and, and in both cases, why, one time you sent me back and said that they're, they're not fully vetted by the-
FDA.
FDA, okay. But they are emergency approved by FDA. And the first one I sent you, it looked to me like the, the accuracy rate was somewhere around 98%, and so I'm not sure why that 98% is not good enough. The FDA, they require you to get to 100% before that we can say it. The second link that I sent you to take a look at, it was fairly lengthy, and, and you've got to be, have a lot more education in medical than I have, but that's why I wanted to make sure that Dr. Minz and Adrian took a look at it. It was from another company that was saying that their, their antibody testings are very, very accurate. My concern is I don't want the county to be looking at this strictly as a health issue, because if you look at our plan for opening up businesses, it says it's a health and economic development pro, plan, and getting people back to work is economic development. And somehow, we need the, these employers to have the confidence that when they bring their employees back, that they have some kind of a test. Now, if you can give the regular test that we're giving to folks and get them all, get the whole county or everybody that needs tested, I don't have a problem with you using that, but if we don't have enough tests for that and we can get the antibody test, something is better than nothing. Right now, we have nothing. So I, I want to know why we're not pursuing this antibody testing.
Can I ask a question, clarification? Commissioner, are you wanting any company that wants to open to be able to call us and get tests for anybody? Is that what you're saying?
Sure. Why not?
I just was wondering. I, I just wanted to clarify. I mean, it could be a mob and pop-
We need businesses open, and I had a meeting with businesses last week, and they want to test their employees before they bring them back in, but we don't have any way of doing that. We're not testing any well people right now.
I, I just wanted to clarify.
They have to have two symptoms. If you go over to WSU, they'll test anybody, but I, we need, Sedgwick County is the Health Department.
I wanted to, I wanted to clarify, because I had a conversation with one of our very larger employers that said, are you going to require testing? Because when they're bringing in thousands of people per shift, they don't have the capacity or the time to line them up and do all that. So they were wanting, I said, well, I think you can do your own thing, but if you're asking us to provide testing materials and everything else to every employer, that, that could be a sizable chore, but, but I'm just saying some of the feedback I got from, so I, I hear what we're saying about, about opening up the-
It's a huge economic development part of this, and we've got to make sure that if we're going to send them back, we send them back safely. So how are we going to do it? I guess, what's your plan?
Well, I guess, my initial response is going to be that from a Health Department perspective, what we focused on so far from the Health Department perspective is health rather than economic development. I recognize there's economic development impacts here. I'm not sure how or if we have the capacity within the Health Department to address all of the economic development issues in the community. As I've talked repeatedly when we've been here to discuss testing in particular, the Health Department is one small component of the overall testing capacity in the community and one small component of the tests that are delivered. Right now, I think Tom showed earlier this morning, the, the dashboard, it shows that in the county, we've had 8,000 folks tested. We've tested over 1,900 of those, we're about 24% right now, and it varies by week as to how much of that overall testing component we've done. The Health Department's primary focus is to work on preventing public health threats and disease prevention, and so what we do with our testing right now, and we focus primarily on the, the virus test that tells you whether or not you have an active virus, because the CDC, everyone recommends an approach where you test, trace, and contain, and so that's what the Health Department does, and so that's why they're looking for the active virus. The presence of an antibody will tell you whether or not someone has been exposed to that, and it may tell you something about immunity, but not necessarily. Some of the, the testing has not been in place long enough to tell us whether or not presence of antibodies equals immunity. And so I guess one fear that we would have from a health perspective is if we, we processed a lot of antibody tests and identified that people had been exposed to the virus, had the antibodies for the virus, doesn't necessarily mean that they're immune from the virus. And so if they're using that, I think the fear is that we give people a false sense of security, so that they, they've been exposed to the virus, they have antibodies for it, that may not necessarily provide them with immunity. And I think what people are most interested in is knowing that they're immune, and to be honest, right now, it doesn't appear that we have enough data to tell us whether or not antibody presence equals immunity. And so one of the concerns that we would have, if we were to choose to do antibody testing in addition to the, to the virus testing, is that we would potentially be giving a false sense of security to those businesses. Now, there are many folks, as you've indicated, the FDA has provided emergency use authorization for a number of antibody tests, and so there, those tests are available in the community. We're not processing them right now, but they're available, again, they're available in the community. I think once we're more confident, and Dr. Minz is reviewing scientific data all the time, to help us know when that may be helpful information. The antibody presence is one data point in the overall health of the community. It's not the only data point that we need. Right now, we don't have enough confidence in it to be able to change our model, to, to shift from the virus testing to antibody testing, mainly because we're still most interested in tracing individuals who have the active bot, active virus, and then containing that active virus.
But I think the Commission's job is to help the community get back to work safely, and how we do that is, we need your help and advice. No data, which we're going to get if we don't do any testing, we need more testing than we're doing, 400 or so a week, is, that no data is worse than, than not having any, I mean, we're, we're at the point where you have a choice between getting maybe bad data or something that's not 100% accurate, they say it's 98%, and no data. And we can't be sitting here with no data. I can't tell the business leaders, hey, put your people back to work, we're ready to go to work, but we're not going to test anybody, we have no confidence in the test. You're going to have to provide us with a, a means. If that means, if the only thing that you believe is accurate are these tests that we've been giving, 400 a week is not adequate. Let's get some contracts out there then, because we just saw where that a business or a private organization can get 800 tests in a week. Well, why aren't we? Why aren't we doing what we need to do to get businesses back to work? There's two parts to it. We've got to keep the community healthy, that's the Health Department, and we've got to get the workers back to work safely, and we can't do that without some data.
We would love to be able to test more folks, and again, right now, we're focusing on folks who are showing symptoms.
Let's not just concentrate on the Health Department. What does it take for us then to go out and contract, just like was, did at WSU last week? What does it take for us to move forward in testing? We keep saying we can't, we can't, we can't. I want to know what we can, we can, we can.
I would say that we can. Again, what would, one of the questions is, what does that information tell us? And what does it tell the individual?
Well, if it takes the test, that will give us good information. How many can you get? Can you get me 10,000 or 20,000 a week?
We haven't looked for those yet. We'll, we'll look for those and find out whether or not they're available.
We haven't looked to try and get 20,000 tests a week?
For the antibody testing? No, sir.
No, for any, I, I am not hung up on antibody. That is one thing that may be a possibility if we can't get the other ones. What I am hung up on is we're not testing. We're testing less than 400 people or so a week. How do I get businesses open when we're testing that few people?
One of the options that would be available to businesses would be to do the same type of screening that we're doing, and when you look at some of the, the return to work plans that have been promoted by others, they recommend a type of screening at the work, at the door, and generally, that's a questionnaire. So there's four or five questions that you ask folks before they come into work that day, and that has been accepted by industries across the country as a standard for returning people to work. And so we, we've got that information available as part of our plan, and there are addendums that are, I think we've got them posted on the website. I'll follow up with Tanya and make sure that we've got those out there, but there are a number of tools available by industry specific to what they can do to bring folks back to work.
So you're telling me that a questionnaire, say, asking four questions, have you had a temperature within the last week of 100 and above, have you traveled outside the state? That's more accurate than doing an antibody test that you keep discounting?
I, I don't know for sure. That's the issue with the antibody testing. We don't know yet.
You don't know if this questionnaire is valid. You're touting that that's the best way to put people back to work, which you can't tell me is accurate.
I'm not recommending that.
I mean, I'll bet you 100% that that is more inaccurate than doing antibody testing.
But it's more than, sir, it's more than the four tests. We are, that's not all we're implementing to open this building, for example. We're asked, there's a questionnaire on the way in, but there's spacing, Plexiglas, physical barrier, masking policy, it's more than just the four questions. It's, it's the whole scope of trying to open a business or a courthouse or a restaurant in as safe a manner as we can in an environment which is very fluid right now with, with the virus. So it's, it's more than just the questions. It's an entire, it's an entire package of what we have to do to do, to open something to the best of our ability.
I'm not convinced we have a plan. I certainly hope that in the next update, we have a plan.
Well, in terms of expanded testing, I do have two other pieces of information for you. One is that we have developed a plan, as requested, for mobile testing, and so what we're going to do is we're going to try and identify what are known as travel deserts. So we're going to look at areas across the community that have a lower testing rate compared to other areas. That would be one criteria. Another criteria would be areas of the, of the county that indicate a demand for travel, transportation assistance. We'll use the transportation brokerage to help us identify those areas, and then we'd like to scatter those across the community. And we believe that we can, as we, we've got those 47 positions posted, as we fill those 47 positions, we believe that by the first or second week of June, we'll be able to do some mobile testing every week, so we'll take the testing to the communities. And the other thing that we're in the process of doing is developing a randomized test that will help us. We will be testing some asymptomatic folks at that point in time. We're going to get a statistically valid sample, we'll use a call center to make those contacts and get those scheduled. We think that we can do that by mid-June, and so we'll do a baseline test in mid-June, and then we'll follow up with that two to three weeks later to help us understand, again, what's the health of the population. The Health Department is really very good at looking at big numbers and determining the health of the overall community. We're not typically experienced in helping individual, small subsets of populations, except for those that have been exposed to a virus, for example. So we're continuing to work on expanding our testing capabilities and capacity and the methods in which we do test, and so we hope that through all of those different models, and we believe that at some point in time, we'll have, there will be enough confidence in the antibody testing, that that will be an additional data point that will help us. I agree with you 100%. We would like to do more testing, and we have a plan to do more testing.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howell? Yeah, I have a, I have a number of questions. Thank you. I am curious about, if we, if we were to do antibody, antibody testing, would that be covered under the CARES Act funds? Would be able to pay for that?
I think any, any effort to increase testing would be, Lindsey's not here, but I think that's in the wheelhouse of the CARES money.
Okay. Curiously, have we gotten any data from the Health, Health Corps testing that's happened thus far? I know they've done a lot of asymptomatic testing over there. Have they, have they provided any, any data that we can look at yet?
I don't know that we have any specific to them. Their numbers would be embedded within those numbers that Tom showed earlier, the overall, those are part of that county number.
I'm hoping, I hope when we can get a breakout between the symptomatic testing versus the asymptomatic testing, and I think that is important for us to understand.
I would agree. I, I don't know that KDHE has a way to distinguish that, but we'll follow up with them and see if they can tell us that.
Well, we talked, I know that we plan on doing at least one Saturday because of the Labor Day weekend. I guess that's this coming Saturday?
That's correct.
We talked a little, we, at our, at our conference call we had the other day with Commissioner Cruz and a number of others in the community, we talked about doing weekend testing generally. There are people who may not be able to be there during the weekday that would like to be tested, that maybe need to be tested at our facility. Have we talked about maybe opening that up on the weekends, just so we can make sure that people have access to test opportunities?
I think once we get some of those, some of those vacancies filled, we'll start to look at other opportunities to expand to six days if we need to. We haven't seen a real demand so far of people that are symptomatic, indicating that a Saturday test would be better, but we're certainly open to that sort of thing as well.
Well, I mentioned this last week, and I'll say it again. I think we, we have capacity left, we have test kits available. I think we need, we need to open up asymptomatic testing at our own west-central location. I think we ought to allow that to happen. I think it helps us, again, we can intercept the data on the front end rather than having to get the data from KDHE. I think it would, it would be very helpful. In other words, I see that look. Health Corps data is going to KDHE, and we're getting it back from them, it sounds like. If we do, if we provide the testing at our own facility, I, I assume we have access to the results of those tests, so we would know, because we're providing data to KDHE versus getting data from KDHE, we, we would, we would understand our own data maybe more deeply. Is that true?
I will, I'll have to check with the EPIs and make sure that we're tracking tests. I, I'll have to check on that.
Okay. Anyway, I, I guess I would, I would ask, since we have test kits available, and it seems that we have more than we really need at the moment, okay? We have, I would say, we have, we don't have huge amounts, but we have enough right now that we ought to be able to open up asymptomatic testing, I think, at our, at our central location. I would, I would, I would, as a Commissioner, I would like to ask for that. I do agree with Commissioner Dennis that the asymptomatic testing, excuse me, that the antibody testing would be, would be beneficial to our community, and if I understand correctly, they're, they're a little easier to administer, they're less expensive, and, and the results are more readily available. The results are more dynamically available, available- available, available to the tester, to see how the, the test results are. So with that, with that in mind, I think we can qualify the results of those tests. You can simply tell people, it doesn't mean that you can't get COVID-19, but it would help them to have some, some sense of where they are. And I, if I understand correctly, even if you've had COVID-19, there's now opinion out there that you might be able to get it again in the, in the future. Is that true?
That's what we're seeing, and that's why, again, antibody presence doesn't necessarily mean immunity.
My point would be that, so no testing we provide would give someone the total assurance that they can't get COVID-19, no matter what, no matter what their history is.
Correct.
So again, we need to qualify the results and say, based on what we know right now, you're less, you probably are likely to be less susceptible in the future because of the results of these tests. Still, it's still precautions are needed, risk mitigation is still encouraged, but I think that that would help our businesses get back on their feet. And so I think, I think we ought to be able to use that CARES money to provide that test. And to me, it's the, it's the fastest way to get the greatest amount of testing out there. I'm disappointed that Kansas has been at the bottom of the, of the country in terms of our testing percentages. But within our state, Central County has been less than most of the other large urban counties. So we are, we stick out a little bit on our test numbers. And I'd like to, I guess I'd say, we, I'd like to turn that around and say, up to this point, we've not done as good as we would like, let's do better going forward. And the antibody testing, I think, is very much available, and we have the money to do it. We ought, we have to lean forward and be, we ought to make sure that's available to the community as soon as possible. I think that would actually do a lot for this community to get us, our businesses back open. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think one thing we just have to really understand, though, is that even if we do have the testing, I think to Tim's point, we don't want to give us a false sense of security, that just because you've had a test doesn't mean that you couldn't get it. I mean, I think precautions that we're taking are, are absolutely necessary, and we need to really focus on those. I think, I, I completely understand that you're working on a plan, and I think it's important to recognize the fact that you haven't just been sitting around doing nothing. And I think it's important that we really give credit where credit is due. You had 10,000 tests on order last week. I mean, we had 9,000 in, in, you know, in our bank, and then you had 10,000 on orders. So he is, I mean, you guys are ordering a lot. It's about acquisition of those. I mean, where are they at? If we were to give, you know, if, if we were to open it to our businesses, how many do we keep for those who are symptomatic? I mean, I think there's a threshold that we have to understand. So I, Tim, I, I really think that you guys are doing a very good job. I'm, I'm looking forward to this plan, the, the transportation deserts. I mean, that's the first, I'm, we've kind of heard about that. So I think that that's, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing that. When are you going to present that to us?
Well, we'd like to be able to present it to the community and to everyone. End of March, first part of June, we'd like to start that possibly the first week of June, going to our first community with a mobile test site.
But you're going to present it to us when? Like, not when you're going to launch it, but when, when will we hear, like, where the transportation deserts, deserts are? Where, you know, we've been talking about the Ninth Street test, testing site? I mean, that's, that's another opportunity, but if we're not going to do that, then where are those at so the community will know?
But hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be, we'll be able to identify a schedule either end of this week, first part of next, probably first part of next, next week, we'll be able to identify a schedule.
And then outside of the, the, the testing kits that we already have, and then the ones that we ordered, have we ordered any additional?
We have. And the current inventory as of today is 11,731. We've still got a number out on order. We order to replenish everything that we've used plus more. And we anticipate that we will increase our testing, particularly when we start doing some randomized asymptomatic testing across the community, because we're not going to just do that once. We'll do it multiple times to help understand what's going on with the virus.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, for your work.
Okay. Tim, did you have some more report?
I think I've been able to cover all of it, unless there are more questions.
Well, I just, my comment is that it's, it's been a healthy discussion, obviously, in respect the, I, I was a little caught off guard. I've had numerous, numerous business conversations, and they're more, they're really concerned about their own protection of their employees and their customers. I've not had one conversation where I said, well, do you want to test everybody, your clients that come in, you want to test your employees? Other than the one major employer that's putting in thousands of people on a shift, I don't know that the businesses would want to test to get open. The conversations I've had numerous, and I know Commissioner O'Donnell's had a number of, of those conversations too. We're working hard with, with the state and the governor's office to get the economy open, and it's all been about how do we protect things like that. So I, I respect the testing availability. I'd be glad to say, hey, if you want to test your employers and, and get, get results back 24 hours later, or test your customers. I, I went into a car dealership to get two cars oil changed, and I signed a form that said, have you been out of state? No. Have you been around somebody? No. I don't know what they do with it, but it was a major car dealership here in town. So I, I think, I think the businesses are rocking and rolling, ready to go open. I, I don't know that testing is, is an important, I guess it's a great option they could have, but I, I think some of our businesses would, if we said, please test, I'm not, I don't think they'd like that at all for their employees or their, or their customers unless they have a concern. So it's just a difference of observation. You've obviously had some conversations with others that think they can't open without testing, and that's fine. I, I don't have those conversations. So that's just my comment. But I appreciate if we have that stuff available and, and option. And now that I know that, I can interject that into my conversation with, with all these businesses, so.
Yeah. Commissioner? Just to follow up, I, I don't think that we're asking them to do something specifically. I, I'd just like to make this an option, available, available to them if that's what they want to do.
Sure.
And I, and just to be clear, the, the, the test you're talking about, the asymptomatic randomized test, that will be conducted, you're saying, about mid-June? That's, that's nearly a month from now, and the results of that might be, you know, a week or two later. So we're talking, you know, four or five weeks from now before we actually have our baseline test. And that's, we're supposed to be towards, you know, the end of phase three at that point as a state. I, I think that the testing that we're doing right now is just really, really late, it's not very helpful at that point. And so the, the testing we do sooner than later is more beneficial. And I appreciate the, the scientific nature of that particular test that's being thought through, but I think if we were just to open this up and, and get the, the antibody tests out there, we would have some data, at least that would help know a little bit about what's going on in the community. And if we were to open up our asymptomatic testing at our, at our health department, we would have data of, you know, from the, from that type of testing, that would be very helpful. And again, so I think that's having, having more testing sooner than later is, is certainly the right, right way for us to go. In terms of employers, I don't think we should require them to do anything on this, but I think, I think we ought to make it available. Since, since we have the funds, we should offer it to them. Thank you.
All right. Tim, thank you for your report. Okay. All right. Moving on.
Chairman, I think Rusty is actually physically here, he's in the boardroom, he has just a very short report on PPEs, I think.
Okay. Rusty, you on your way?
I'll be brief. I know you have other business to take care of. On the Emergency Operations Center and PPE update, I don't have a great deal. The first thing I'll tell you is that we've been, the EOC's been open for 60 days tomorrow. March 20th is the day that we first opened partially because of the COVID pandemic. So at 60 days, we are starting to see stress on our unified command partners who have been in, involved there for the total two months. So we are working on some staffing transition to help support the logistics and the warehouse operations. I'm looking to unified command partners for personnel that they can spare, and I'm also looking internally at county resources, some of these folks that may come back from furlough that their particular departments don't have enough work yet to keep them busy. So I just want you to be aware that 60 days into a pandemic, having the Emergency Operations Center open basically from about 7:00 in the morning till 6:30 in the evening, Monday through Friday, and for several weeks, we were open on weekends. Those other departments, those unified command departments from outside the county that have been providing support are needing to see their employees come back to their original assignments. So we're working on that, so you're aware. Not a problem, we'll get it taken care of. The state continues to provide us with supplies. They have made some acquisitions of their own, and they are being somewhat responsive to our requests for equipment, specifically non-N95 masks. They had a great number of KN95s that don't qualify as, as actual N95 medical masks, but they are great to keep on, to put on people so that they don't spread should they have the virus. And then they came through with an extremely large number of face shields to help support the dentist offices that are beginning to open up. Donations, we are seeing decline dramatically, which is understandable since we are starting to see businesses open back up, and the need for certain types of protective equipment are, are growing in our community, so donations are beginning to wane at this point. Locally, right now, we're doing, we're doing pretty well on protective equipment, as far as first responders and medical personnel are concerned, based on the information they're feeding us on our weekly burn rate and supply on hand reports that they submit, which will be coming in, this week's will be coming in by close of business, business today. So I'll be excited, or at least interested, to see how things look going into the next week. Right now, the things that we need locally are disinfectant wipes, which are still kind of scarce and hard to get, hand soap, and we still want to try to acquire some more N95s to have on hand and to distribute as necessary. The Patel disinfectant solution up in Topeka, we have 46 local businesses and government entities that have registered with Patel, and we are receiving some small drop-offs at our facility up north that Topeka drives down and picks up, takes up, disinfects and brings back. So we are seeing some usage there. It's not high volume yet, but we are having some of these entities that signed up use the, use the service, so we're reusing some N95 masks by getting them cleaned and brought back. And then finally, on a positive note, we'll end on a positive note, we provided a non-congreguent housing resource for our first responders and medical personnel should they have the need. And I think it's a good thing that we're able to report that there has been virtually no usage of that. We've had some who chose to shelter in place at home if they were symptomatic or had symptoms and, and thought that they could have the virus. I don't know that we've had anybody that has tested positive. We've had, we had four or five firefighters several weeks ago that were housed in that non-congreguent housing, and more recently, we had one fire supervisor who was exposed to an employee who contracted, potentially contracted the virus away from work. But otherwise, usage has been very low. Our first responders are staying healthy. They're using practices across all departments, city of Wichita, county, and other first response entities are using pretty effective methods to screen their employees. If they feel ill, if they have symptoms, if they have fever, they don't report to work, they stay home till they feel better. If they have symptoms, they're being tested by the health department so that we can clear them quickly and get them back to work. And as I said, most all of those tests are coming back negative, their symptoms are not COVID, it's not the virus. And so generally, our first responders are staying very healthy based on the methods that the departments are using to screen and keep them segregated if they are feeling ill or having fever until they're well enough to come back to work so that the other employee is not getting infected. So from the emergency operations, Emergency Operations Center and PPE standpoint, that's really all I've got for today.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Rusty.
Thank you.
Good day. Okay. Ready to move on to pug mills, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Weber.
Send in our next patient, please.
Good morning.
Mr. Spears.
So David, when, when did you hear that?
You know, a little straight foot just might be 55 people ahead of that.
Yeah.
So I couldn't get it.
Mine's today. Olive this morning. Got his. Yes, sir. It's shaggy like. It's terrible. Saturday. Good morning. Jim Weber for the record, Deputy Director of Public Works. We're back to talk to you about, it gets a couple of names, a cold mix plant or a pug mill, and kind of bringing you up to date on where we're at on it. So Public Works has had a cold mix program. We've done over probably 200 miles of road, gravel roads, but cold mixed over the years. It was originally intended as a first step to a full reconstruction of a road. The program was very wildly popular, and at some point, we really had too many of them, and we started talking to commissioners years ago about slowing down the process. And at this point, we're not, no longer taking over any township roads and, and cold mixing them or anything. We currently have about 148 miles of cold mix roads that we're maintaining. We did decommission the pug mill in 2016 that had, it was 30 years old, it was needing a lot of repairs, it was due for a lot of expensive repairs, and it just, it was too late, time to get, get off of it. We did attempt to replace the pug mill in 2017, after going through an analysis and trying to do that, it was determined that we really didn't have the funding to do a pug mill at that time. And so currently, we do buy hot mix asphalt for some maintenance and repairs that we do on an annual basis. I guess I should be, I got to handle all this, all right? There were some intangible reasons to consider having a cold mix plant in the past, why one might want to consider it even today. It does mitigate some supply chain risks. Contractor suppliers might not be able to, or might not be willing to supply asphalt when we need it. We could control our own destiny if market conditions changed. Can be easier to develop new asphalt mixes that specific to our needs. And really, the logistics are somewhat simpler because the trucks and the cold mix plant were all at the same place, which is always a benefit. So in early 2020, again, the commissioner expressed interest in the issue of the cold mix roads and what are we going to do with them. Long-term question really became what will Public Works do to manage cold mix roads going forward? We've had an opportunity to reconsider all of our options again. We looked at our current situation, we looked at what the future might look like, and we really looked at more options for, other than just replacing the cold mix asphalt plant. Our question really turned into what are we going to do going forward? And it seemed like maybe the end goal, what we should really look at would be the materials themselves and not focus so much on the, the equipment that gets us there. We have worked five different options. In these options, as we've done analysis, we've used inflation adjustments, and for materials and utilities, we use the standard rates that our budget people use to do forecasts. Where there's a comparison, we've used commercial cold mix costs based on a, an estimate that we've gotten to calculate a payback period on the cold mix plant. And the last time I think we talked to you would have probably been last summer. We did a paper in June of 2019, so in June or July, we would have been talking to you about that comparison there. So the first one we look at would be the idea of just purchasing commercially produced cold mix asphalt. And so we're going to build the table as we go, and I don't want to bore you, but in this case, we, when we looked at doing a plant, it wouldn't, I'll talk about that in the next one, it wouldn't have been online until 2022. So we have done inflation. to build the table as we go, and I don't want to bore you, but in this case, we, when we looked at doing a plant, it wouldn't, I'll talk about that in the next one, it wouldn't have been online until 2022. So we have done inflation adjustments from 2019 to 2022 for what cold mix would cost then. So we're looking at $54 a ton in the twenty-four, I'm sorry, in 2019 timeframe, we inflated that up to 5730 for 2022. In this instance, the vendor would be doing the production labor. We would haul it in-house, just like we did from our own plant. We would do in-house construction, like we did at our own plant. We are recommending that any of these things that have us constructing asphalt, we're recommending the purchase of a paving machine. That's about a $250,000 investment, so that's showing up here. This is really the base for the calculation of the payback on the cold mix plant, so there's no calculation for that. And this is based on verbal quotes that we would have gotten back in May of 2019. We need about 22,000 tons a year to build five miles of cold mix road. So that's where the 22,000 comes from.
Good, Jim.
Yes, sir.
These columns, option, the option, and then the number one, I guess there's a number two. Okay.
There'll be five when we get done.
Okay, so this would say, and all these five options are going to be if we purchase a cold?
No, it's a variety of things. So we'll walk through it, and then we'll take a stab at whatever doesn't make sense then. Okay?
If I ask questions as we go, it's relevant to this proposal here. So just want to be clear, this, this asphalt would be purchased, I assume from Kingman County is our closest option?
Yes.
So to haul that from Kingman County, has that been factored into the cost here?
No, that's just, that would be an in-house cost. It would be more expensive than hauling it from anywhere in town.
And their plant also does hot mix, I understand, so they would have to convert to cold mix for that?
It's my understanding that the one in Kingman only does cold mix. A plant in town could produce hot mix, but they'd have to convert for that purpose.
So that would be available at any time we need it in Kingman County?
If they're running, if they're running in Kingman County, they might not have the volume that we have here at the hot mix plants, let's say. But if they're running, it would, but cold mix has the benefit of, you can literally stack it on the ground and pick it up, you know, two weeks later and go do something with it.
Okay, thank you.
So the second one is the, really the option where we purchase a new cold mix plant. And so this is what we're calling county cold mix, county laid. We're doing everything that's going back to the way we used to do things. We calculated a 2022 cost for the materials at forty-seven, a little less than $45 a ton. This is in-house labor, in-house hauling with our own trucks, in-house construction. The capital cost for that plant is $4.1 million. We calculated against the option one, we calculated fifteen-year payback period. That's based on the lower cost, you know, but how much material we produce at the lower cost makes up for the capital expense going up front. So it'll take about fifteen years to pay that back. This was pretty extensively covered in the June 2019 evaluation that we did. That's the reference there. And again, we did that on 22,000 tons. So to produce the 22,000 tons, it would cost about $985,000 a year for the materials. That'd be a purchase that we'd be making that's not included in the 4.1.
Okay, Jim, can you say that, that's not on here, right?
No, it's not on here.
How much was that again?
985.
985,000?
Right. And then the utility costs, we need quite a bit of gas and electricity, that's about 81,000 a year.
Why was that not included on here?
Well, we have, that's all included in the payback analysis. So this, it's, it's part of the payback.
It's part of the fifteen-year payback.
Fifteen-year payback.
But the capital costs of 4.1, and then 985,000 in, in
Materials.
Materials, a year.
Which we had done before. That's not really new. That's just, that's just a cost, that's kind of a
And 81,000 in utilities?
In utilities.
Okay, a year.
So I'm not saying, not trying to characterize it as a new cost, it's just, that's what it is.
So when we say
It's operating, operation costs, I'm sorry.
I apologize. No, when we say 22,000 tons, how many miles of road is that to maintain per year?
That's enough to build five miles from scratch.
To build five miles?
Right.
We're not talking about building roads, we're talking about maintaining roads. I know this is titled replacement program, but what we're really talking about is keeping the roads we have now and making them last hopefully forever. So we need some material to make that happen. And the 22,000 tons would build five roads. We're not going to build roads with cold mix. That's not part of the plan. We're not doing that, right? We need to maintain what we have. So that's, how much material do we need to take care of the roads we have currently per year?
Again, let me walk through the rest of this, and we'll try to, I think we can wrap that in the end.
Okay.
Okay. Go to the third one. This is purchasing hot mix asphalt as needed. And so this is a version where we would need a, buy a laydown machine for about $250,000. We'd be buying hot mix asphalt from one of the local vendors. That cost, based on pricing that we had late last year, we do, again, we buy about 2,500 tons a year of hot mix asphalt for patching and over box covert replacements in some various places that we use it. It's a three-year contract, so the average on that's $43.25 a ton. The vendor provides the production labor. We provide the hauling, we pick it up at the plant. We do the in-house construction. We have not calculated a payback period because it doesn't make much sense. And this is just a reference to the RFB for the contract, and that's based on 2,500 tons. There is an assumption here that if we were buying more than 2,500 tons, there's economies of scale, the price would go down some. I'm not saying a lot, but it would be likely this number or less as we go forward. And so five miles, again, the comparison being five miles of full depth, that's about $952,000 a year to do five miles of, of new road. Fourth one would be a version where we would use a contractor. We do that from time to time right now. So in this past year, we had a project that included some hot mix. It's a Bond Tech project, so we had some Bond Tech, and we had some hot mix, like we were talking about doing. The subset for that, that's $80 a ton is what we paid for that. So that is, the contractor makes it, the contractor hauls it, the contractor puts it down. It's like building any of our new road projects. And that's really more for comparison. Again, it didn't make any sense to try to do a payback on that one. That's just, that's information. That contract had about 3,000 tons of hot mix asphalt on it. So the fifth one, we did look at then is, there was an idea maybe about doing a hot mix plant instead of a cold mix plant. This one, we didn't spend a lot of time on. The initial capital investment increases from like $4.1 million to $6.1 million. Requires more expensive oils, more expensive aggregates. And in comparison to a cold mix plant, it would just be, you know, the payback just really goes out of sight. But we did include it just for information, try to help with it. So this is our summary. And again, they're not necessary apples and apples. There is kind of the range of things that we looked at, and you kind of have to evaluate what, what makes the most sense. So what we're recommending is the third option. It does require a minimal capital outlife for a paving machine. It has the lowest overall cost per ton. It provides a material that's actually superior to cold mix asphalt. And it's a direct replacement for cold mix asphalt. If we could use cold mix, we can use hot mix. It's scalable. We buy as much as we need in a given year, depending on what the program needs to be. And it allows you to switch later on. If it doesn't work out, you can switch to some other option. And you don't have a major, a $4 million stranded capital investment out there that you're not using for whatever reason. But if three years from now you decide it makes sense, you could still go out and make that investment, and you're really not out anything. Just want to point out that here in Sedgwick County, we've got four private sector suppliers. Corneo has two plants. This is not included, the cold mix plant that's over in Kingman County. And so the question, I think the important question is, how are we going to maintain or manage the cold mix roads? And so what we'd like to do is continue to perform preventive maintenance on a regular and systematic basis. Dave has had this going for 38 years, and it's working. We go out, our field crews and our engineers are always looking at these things. And we, we work on a six-year cycle right now. So the stuff that we're working on in 2020 is roads that we were on in 2014 last. Our people would have looked at them last winter, figure out what it needs. We'd program it into our mix of R175 projects, and we'd get it done. We would continue to do that. And we'd schedule reconstructions when they're needed, and as the budget allows. An example of that is, we think 151st Street up by Colwich needs to be done. We've added that to the CIP for the next cycle. And we would continue to watch for those and put them in when we think that they need to be there. And we are considering some options for a pavement condition study of all county roads. We don't, you know, we talked to you about the bridge program in the CIP. There's a federal rating scale that we go through. Because the systematic program that we use has worked so well, we really haven't gone through and done any evaluation, rating scale, score of all the county roads. We are looking at doing that, just to kind of see where we're at for sure as we go forward. Now I'll try to answer any questions you might have if I haven't covered it.
Thank you. So we looked at a budget request this year. It's in the CIP, and I don't remember exactly the numbers, but it was about 1.5 million, not this year, but 1.5 million next year. And I think it was stated that would take over about seven miles. And you said over the next five years, you'd do 42 miles. Is that right? And I, again, that doesn't quite make sense, because I think the total number was 4.5 million, but that we saw in that CIP line. And maybe I'm wrong on that, that's my memory. But the seven miles, that's replacement. That's not, that's not maintenance. Is that, is that correct?
That was intended, R350 is intended to be replacement. So a bad cold mix road, or a gravel road that needs to, a county gravel road that needed to be upgraded to some kind of pavement, it's one and a half million a year. I think we have, we need to take it in 2020 to do the things we need to do now. And we need to take it in 21 to do, and these are the state projects, the North Junction in particular. We need to take it in 2021, but it should start up again in 2020. Well, we haven't actually used that line yet, because 20 would have been the first year. So 22, we would have one and a half million to go out and do something that's more significant than what we would do in our preventative maintenance program to a cold mix road. And we've tried not to say it's five, it's six, it's seven. We're trying to stay with, we'd evaluate them and decide what they need, and we'd spend what we need to spend, whether it's a hundred thousand, two or 300,000. We'd look at each thing on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I'll just say, I have always been proud of Sedgwick County. I think our infrastructure has always been top-notch, and I would credit Public Works and the leadership of David Spears to keep it that, the way it's been all these years. But you mentioned that for 38 years we've been doing this, but we have a significant change in what we're doing. And that is, we're not, we ain't going to be able to maintain 150 miles of roads the way we have been, because this doesn't provide that option. If I divide out the numbers, you said about $952,000 would pay five miles. That's what you set up for option three.
Right.
Again, I don't know, that, I don't know how that's relevant to taking care of 150 miles of, of our, of our roads that we have now. That's not been presented here today. I don't know how much material that would take, but that's something we have, we should take care of about one-sixth of those roads every year. And that's not been presented here today, what that would cost to use hot mix product to take care of one-sixth of our cold mix roads each year. And that, that is the most critical information. The payback period that you presented here, 15 years, that's based on data I don't have in front of me. I can tell you that we took care of those roads for, I, I can go back and look at those books and find out what we spent each year on preventative maintenance on, on, when we had our, when we had our pug mill. But it wasn't very much money, actually. Do you remember what the numbers were, Mr. Spears?
No. You don't want to get crosswise with hot mix and cold mix.
I understand.
You know, we have the preventive maintenance on the hot mix, one-six, like you're talking about. Cold mix is a different animal. A cold mix road can fall apart over a winter. It can fall apart if heavy trucks go on it. So we, it, they're really hard to, they're unpredictable. So what we do now is, with our own forces, we don't have a pug mill now, with our own forces, we seal. And I think, you know, that we do about 20 miles a year of sealing. But that's just, kind of makes it look good. It's not really good down below, but it, it, it pacifies the system, but it's not the solution. So we don't use our own forces on the hot mix roads, but we do use our own forces and always have on the, the cold mix roads. So don't, don't mix those two up. That's all I'm trying to say.
And I think I am. And my question is, lately, we've been using a hot mix product on top of some of cold mix roads for repairs and any type of refurbishment of that road. We've been using a hot mix product lately.
We have done it, yes, because we've been forced to do it, because we have no other options.
Right. So I'd like to know
But it's not a good idea. It's not cost efficient, but
That's exactly my point. So again, we need to know what that costs per mile, because that's the key. To maintain 150 miles of road in Sedgwick County long-term will require a process. Just doing a, a seal coat is not going to be enough. We have to add material to that road once in a while. And we've been doing that ever since I've been a commissioner. For, I'm in my sixth year now, we've been doing this, until we lost the cold mix plant, and we stopped. Now we've gone a number of years, we've not been doing this. And things are going to get critical here, because these roads typically, you've said in the past, last seven to 10 years.
Four, seven.
If you're lucky, 10 years. But you've got to do something to that road to keep it, to keep it worth good. And if you don't do that, you're going to be tearing out that road. Again, so I understand that hot mix is better, it's also a lot more expensive. But what you've not presented to us today is, what's it cost to maintain by adding material as needed to a cold mix road, using a cold mix technology versus a hot mix technology? What's that cost? The 15-year payback, in my opinion, is, is, is using numbers here that doesn't make sense to me. We don't have the data to know what it costs per mile to, if we had a cold mix plant, to add material to a cold mix road every seven years or six years or whatever it would be, as needed, using a laydown machine, which you talked about that in the past, that would be a tremendous way of doing that, what that would actually cost to get us into that business. And that would take care of these roads forever. We need to have that data.
Well, here again, you cannot build a road properly from the top down. You've got to build it from the bottom up. So cold mix roads, like I said, can completely tear up. And then the other thing is, if you're, if you're just thinking that you're going to add every year, now just think about the road. It's a narrow width already, usually on the cold mix, and you're building it up. Then you've got your shoulder drop-off. That's a safety problem. So in some cases, we're going to have to grind the road completely up. Now, that's not a bad thing, because then when you grind it up into little pieces, you can incorporate that with our sheep's foot and compactors into the base, put the overlay on top of it, and you're going to have a better road than you had before, because you've got to build it from the bottom up. So it's a complicated situation. There's different solutions for different roads. There's different heights. There's different widths. There's different slopes down to the ditches. So it's, it's complicated. There's not an answer. But I know what you're trying to, what you're getting at. Like, we have 150 miles, and if you're only doing five miles a year, that's 30 years.
Correct.
So what happens to all the other roads while you're doing the five? And that's what you're concerned about. All we can do is patch the other roads, because you're not going to have enough money to do all 150 miles in one year. It's impossible. So you have to patch or put some of the other preventive maintenance product on the top of it, which those cost about, I'm going to say, average $75,000 a mile.
Okay, so
But that doesn't cure it. That's just cosmetic.
I, I understand. Ideally, you would tear out the road and put a better base in and build a hot mix road. And that's, that's extremely expensive per mile. That's, that's at least a couple hundred thousand a mile, at least, to do that.
Or we have, the other thing nobody's talked about, we have 33,000 tons of chips right now in piles that you can take and rejuvenate and put those chips on, too. So we do have some materials on hand. Now, we can eat, if you had a pug mill, you could do it, but you don't have to have a pug mill to do that. You can hire some. We have hired in the past, when we didn't have the pug mill, we've hired a company to come in and do that. And it, and it worked well.
All right. Let's, I'm asking for some very basic data. What's it cost, if you had a, if you had a pug mill and you can create the cold mix asphalt, what's it cost per mile to, again, I understand that you don't want to add material every year, I didn't say that. But it'd say every seven or 10 years, you add a little bit of material. Eventually, you might have to grind that down at some point in the, in the distant future and re-level the road, if you will, and do something more significant. future and re-level the road, if you will, and do something more significant. Okay? But in terms of a, in terms of something you do every seven to 10 years, adding some material to that road as needed, and in between those years, you would seal it, potentially. Every few years, you might do something else to the road. You patch it, obviously, as needed. Okay? We ought to have that estimate. That's the key estimate. And I, I've been talking about this now since 2016. And I still don't have good data. And I'm just...
I'm not trying to dodge your question, and we've got a lot of smart engineers down there who can figure out what it costs per mile to build a road. The factors that you don't know about are, have you noticed like the price of gas, how it went down lately? Oil is very volatile on price, and it can either be real cheap or real expensive. Some of your other materials are, too. So, it's hard to, this, that Jim, this is, you know, we're independent thinkers down there. And this is a great presentation Jim made, and the numbers are right, but those numbers are as right now. You don't know what those numbers are going to be in 15 years.
Let me ask another question. How long does a pug mill last, if we were to buy one?
The last two that we've had, the, the county made us keep them each for about 30 years. We've had two. I've talked to the old-timers, each of them, about, I mean, it goes to the point where you can't even buy parts anymore, and they're just, you can't get them. So, 30 years.
And the last time...
You know it's going to pay off sometime in that 30 years.
The last time we purchased one, you didn't, it didn't even come before the commissioner to actually make the decision.
No, back, back in 90. I just walked the halls and said, "The pug mill's broke. We need another one."
So, if this lasts 30 years and your payback is 15 years or 16 years, as you stated here, is this still not the least, the least expensive option? Even if it was 16 years, is this still not the least expensive option to take care of our roads over the next 30 years?
What, a pug mill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we disagree. I don't understand what I said. We're independent thinkers, all right? You, you saw this recommendation, and, and I think it's great that we think different. I think, over the long term, 30 years, because that's how long you're going to have it.
Right.
So, just, okay, I'm going to make a, just a brief statement here. Sedgwick County's going to have to have tens of thousands of tons, tens of thousands of tons of asphalt over the next 30 years. So, the question is, you're going to make it yourself, or you're going to pay somebody to make it? Is it cheaper to make it yourself or pay a middleman? I think with almost any product, it's cheaper for any company to make it themselves, rather than pay a middleman. So, I think the answer personally is a pug mill. But, that's a high upfront cost, which we do not have the money now to buy, because of what Jim was saying, the North Junction, and revenues now, we're losing a million dollars a month because of the pandemic. A million dollars a month, less. So, you could bond it, but that's, that's another, another deal, you know, another add to the bonding list. So, but that, that's, that's my opinion, and it's mainly because I've been here so long and seen what, what can be done. But, and I know how prices are volatile on oil and...
I'll make a statement, and I'll stop talking. But I think right now, we do not have a plan. And I, it sounds like I just quoted David Dennis from earlier today. We do not have a plan that we can afford over the next 30 years to take care of these roads, currently. Without that pug mill, we don't have an option. And I think, again, I don't like debt. You think you all know me on this. But this is what I would call judicious use of debt for very expensive things that you buy very infrequently. This actually qualifies, in my opinion, very well. If you have the, if you have it in your possession and you can lower the cost of your yearly maintenance, and it creates a long-term plan to solve this problem over the next 30 years for 150 miles worth of roads, then this is a smart choice. I know there's people in Public Works that don't like the idea of a pug mill. There are some county commissioners that are, they don't like the idea of a pug mill, because they think we're going to start converting township roads again. That's not what this is about. This is about taking care of the 150 miles we have today. And this is the least expensive option, hands down. And it's the only one we can actually afford. And if it requires debt to get the equipment on the front end, that's fine. But this is the only thing that makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So, you said we've had two of these pug mills in our history, and so, and, and they were each both worth, you know, had like a 30-year lifespan. So, in that 60 years, how much technology has, how, how has it changed?
You mean like road conditions and repairs and maintenance?
So, the point, I guess, that I'm trying to make is that, will technology advance in the next 30 years quicker than it did in the last 60 years? And we would be stuck with something that might be outdated quicker. What, and that's just a statement, really. So, Jim, can you, we've heard from David as far as why he thinks that a pug mill is good. Can you tell us why option three, I think, was your recommendation?
Right. So, I would just point out that it is not the least expensive method, building, having your own pug mill. And if we look at the pricing, we can buy commercial hot mix for less than we can make our county cold mix. We can buy commercial cold mix, it's another 15% premium, buy commercial cold mix. If we actually needed commercial cold mix, we could still buy it on the market. I mean, option three really says, we're not going to put this big and fast bin into the equipment, and we're going to continue to work in the market to find the best products at the best price to do what we need to do at a given time. It's just, I guess, the competing schools of thought are, that doesn't make sense to invest that kind of money in a plant when, for the foreseeable future, perhaps, kind of to your point, when David started, there weren't many options for treating pavement. And he's been an innovator, and people know he's an innovator. And so, we have a list now that's probably, it goes up to J, different things that we've tried or are using. And so, there are always people coming to market with new products that sometimes they don't work out, sometimes they do a great job. And so, so he's had failures in his career. We don't talk about them. There are things that didn't work out.
Remember that one time.
Road armor's one of them. And road armor's great stuff, but it's too noisy. People can't stand the noise. So, I think that the school that's saying, "Don't invest in a plant," is saying, "We have access to all the same materials we would have if we had the plant, but rather than, you know, we would be taking almost three years of that R-1, R-350 project out to build a plant, and then we'd start doing something." And so, and I think he's right about the way things are in the economy right now. It's not really a good time to go do it. But, but the other thing is, I think what we're suggesting is that we would continue to watch this, and if, I wouldn't want to keep bringing the pug mill up, but in two or three years, if it would still look, if it looked like the thing to do, we would not have, you know, it'd be better that way than to have, put the money in the plant and the discovery, didn't want to do it after all. Or, that we might be forced to continue to run the plant, because that's now, we're all invested in that. And so, we really can't look at other options that might be available.
Thank you.
Commissioner Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim, I guess, my question, and, and I could be convinced to support a pug mill. I have had concerns about having that at our disposal at any given time would put us on the hook, I think, if somebody wanted to restart a program where we start adding more and more miles of road, which would be problematic to our budget. But, I'd also like to, to look at doing one of two things. First would be, we're in that, we're in the middle of that Quad County. We have that consortium, the Quad County.
Sure.
If it's something that four counties could do a mobile pug mill, maybe do it on population or whatever, but get more people involved, because we don't run it every day. So, by having a mobile one, we could partner with neighboring counties. The other thing, looking at the hot mix option, is, it's pretty well documented, the city of Wichita has some infrastructure issues with a lot of their roads, is looking at partnering with them to figure out what would be a big plan that we could buy all the equipment together, partner with the city of Wichita, and start doing some, some of the stuff on our own. So, those would be my options, just looking at more partners on this, so Sedgwick County doesn't have to go at it alone. And also, by having more owners, it, it makes it a lot more difficult for us to cave to political pressure, to do, you know, a political favor, say, "I'm up for election this year. David Dennis is up for election this year, and we want to curry favor with one of our townships." Well, we would just ask our colleagues, which happened two years ago, to support us, to help us in a, for a political position, which isn't the appropriate use of infrastructure dollars. And I think by having more owners, it would limit our exposure to political influence. So, my question is, can we look at doing, getting one of these options, but bringing in partners?
Sure. So, I mean, the financial impact of that is that the material is the same, you know, by the ton. The material's the same. It just would make, it would shorten up the payback period based on how many more tons you could run through the plant. I mean, that's really how that happens. So, if it, it would start to close the gap between the cost of produced coal mix and the cost to buy coal mix or buy hot mix. And I'm not quite sure. I mean, I guess if you want to look at that, we'd maybe run it for several different, you know, run it 22,000, 30,000, 40, run different tonages, because we wouldn't know who would be involved, but, and see what happens.
But I just think that the question would be, you know, calling Gary Jansen at the city and saying, "Hey, Gary, would you be interested in doing something like this for us?" Or calling the county engineers in our neighboring counties to say, "Hey, would you be interested in doing this?" And if they are, then I think that's an avenue I personally, and I won't speak for myself, that I personally would be interested in doing, if we could get some partners on it, because it would lower our capital investment dramatically.
So, I do have, I guess, one thing I should mention. I think if this turns into a mobile plant, then bonding is off the table. It would be a cash, sales tax would be fine. It would be a cash purchase, rather than be able to bond it.
Oh, absolutely. And, and I would support even dipping into, you know, capital reserves or something, because it's obvious, it would obviously be a, a good investment for us. But, but I see more value in a mobile plant, even for us county-wise, hauling, hauling the, the chips across the county from our west yard all the way to Commissioner Meister's district. There's a lot of, that's a lot of time and effort by our staff, just hauling stuff back and forth. I see a lot of value in, in having a mobile plant, personally. But, anyway, I'm just, I'm open to options. I'm not shutting the door on the, on the pug mill at all. The money does scare me a little bit, but, you know, public infrastructure is one of our top three priorities, so I'm okay with continuing this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Meister.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many years does a hot mix road last?
Hey, is there any way you guys could take that conversation outside? Thanks.
So, a hot mix road, the life of hot mix road really depends on how, why you maintain it. And so, we think we do a really good job. And so, once we've built one, things that were built when Dave and I first showed up are still functioning, you know, almost 40 years later. If you build them, as he describes, from the bottom up, get a base under it, build the road right, and then take care of it, which, you know, we have been on a five or six-year cycle, they, they could essentially last forever.
And how many years does a coal-mix road last?
Kind of back to Dave's point, they could last a long, long time, or they're unpredictable. They could fall apart really quickly. And that's part of, part of why we keep an eye on them all the time. And so, again, coal mix is, you know, there's not a lot of difference between coal mix and hot mix. The biggest problem with our coal-mix roads is they were done without a base. So, it's, if the base goes, if the truck traffic suddenly increases, that's when you get in trouble. We have long stretches of coal-mix road that are functioning well after 20, 25 years. We have some that we put down, and they fall apart the next year, because somebody does a big grading project right next to it for a Walmart and run every truck over it. Soil conditions don't make a difference. So, one of the, I guess, values of, we talked very briefly about the idea of going out and doing a county-wide evaluation, you know, on a rating scale by some method, would be to get, you know, all 550 miles of our paved roads, you know, evaluated on the same scale and get kind of a snapshot of what they look like whenever we did it. And then, it would be easier to answer a question, "How long will they last?" Some of this stuff has some predictive algorithms built into it, kind of give you an idea what the life is and maybe what you should be able, what you should be doing to it as you go forward.
Well, let me finish up on the hot mix, coal mix, and then I want to, do want to talk about evaluation for, just briefly. But, one of the things that I always address when we're looking at major projects is what the life cycle cost of that is. And if we buy a pug mill for, for $6 million, and we're maintaining a road that lasts five or six years, then we're continually replacing that, or repairing that every five or six years, where that if we put down hot mix, then the life cycle cost, that's what I'd be interested in. What, what is the difference between a huge investment on a piece of equipment to put in a cheap road or put in a good road and not invest in a, in a huge piece of equipment? So, there's a trade-off on the life cycle cost of that. So, that's just a statement. The other thing is that you even had it in your briefing about the evaluation of our roads. As I recall, a couple of years ago, WAMPO, we were talking about road evaluations. And I thought, doesn't City of Wichita have some kind of vehicle that they drive around? I seem to recall something that they can do road evaluations quickly and easily. Is that...
So, KDOT has a contract with a company called Manley. They, they'll either run a vehicle, or they will lease a vehicle. KDOT has leased vehicles from Manley, and they use it on their entire highway system every year, every other year. It's got all kinds of nice things in it, but it, it really does a good analysis of what the condition of the road is. WAMPO looked at that. We had that van down here in the Reagan Building parking lot, as they were looking at it. Wichita has their own system that's kind of homegrown, in-house. It's kind of what hung up. WAMPO was trying to get to a common language, if you will, in ratings, but Wichita being such a big owner of roads and having be really invested in the system that they have, it wasn't practical in the end to try to convert Wichita to something different. Other communities around Sedgwick County have contracted with other people to do other kinds of systems. Some of our people are trained in the Pazer system, but we just don't go out and systematically do it. So, anyway, the WAMPO program, which I was, spent a lot of time with and looking at, because I thought might be an opportunity for us to piggyback on whatever they wanted to do. They're not pursuing that kind of asset management program right now, and are working with people submitting projects based on a variety of scoring methods and trying to, trying to get all that kind of worked out. But, but Manley is one of the people, we have talked to Manley about what would it take. That was really before COVID hit, and, you know, everybody headed for the hills, so that conversation kind of stopped. But, that's one of the things we looked at would be, you know, what would it take to get them in here to make a run one time and get us some sort of uniform data? It's not that people looking at it isn't good, but it's a little hard to manage for 550 if you don't, you know, these are kind of electronic and LiDAR-based methods that find defects that we wouldn't even see normally. There are other, that could be a little expensive side. There are other options to look at. But, it's probably time. And I think, you know, we're, we are in agreement on that. It's probably time to go back and, and do that evaluation countywide and just kind of get a snapshot, see where we're at.
Well, I think before we make a decision on a huge capital project, we ought to have a good evaluation of what the condition of our roads are and what we need to do in the future to keep them in great condition. So, anything we can do to, if we can talk to KDOT into bringing their vehicle back down here and us doing 500, 600 miles, that'd be great. But, it's a piece of data we need before we spend four, five, six million dollars on a piece of capital equipment.
Yeah. And we did try to get KDOT, we're talking to the manufacturer themselves. KDOT, we tried to get them to do something down here, and we, we couldn't get them there. But, it's a really slick space-age van. Not that we do things because they're slick and space-age, but...
We've got a great Secretary of Transportation right now, and maybe we are...
Well, maybe it's a different time, yeah.
It's a different time than it was when we looked at it before. Thank you.
Okay. So, Jim, on your slide 11, if we did, if we did not pursue buying the mill and these other options, you're saying going forward, your recommend, the recommendation would be item three?
Three, because we have hot mix readily available in Sedgwick County.
Or, if we did nothing, would you be operating the way it is today, or would that be still item three?
Well, we'd probably be in item three, because basically, R-175 sets us up to buy materials that we need for roads.
Okay.
So, but, I guess the issue is, we can't really deal with hot mix in any kind of quantities if we don't spend the money on a paver, the 250,000.
Okay. So, that's, yeah, and the next slide, the 250,000 paving machine, that's, is that in the CIP as of now?
It's not a CIP item. We did turn it in as a decision package. That's still in the stack that's being considered.
Okay.
And maybe depends on how you feel about this option, but...
Okay. So, if we did, if we did status quo and said, "Hey, keep taking care of our X miles a month a year and whatever," you would say, you got... you would say, you guys would say, well, we can do that under option three with, with these additions? Is how you could still perform status quo?
We would just do it, it'd be part of our one seventy-five, we would buy one of the purchases, well, we have a purchase for hot mix asphalt, we would either do a second one for a specific specification or increase the size of that purchase. And it would vary, I would say to you that, like the rest of our program, it would vary every year. We'd do an evaluation if we needed to cap, if hot mix was the right thing to do, we needed to cap something with an inch and a half or two inches of hot mix on two miles, and we would buy that much material and go do it.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not a, a static number necessarily?
I don't see it as static, it compete, it would compete against everything else that we do. The, the repaving, the recycling, the Nova Chips. It would just be our people picking the right process for the right road at the right time.
Okay. And then I think the discussion earlier about the market and market forces, you know, you're right. Today, there's some, there's some people that own, own oil rat, oil production, and they wish that they were doing, using third parties instead of owning it themselves right now, I can tell you that.
Well, and to be clear, all this pricing is pre-COVID. This is not, if we went out today for a short period of time, we'd probably get a great price on asphalt.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be misleading, so...
I hear you. Okay, well, it, okay, well, I know that we wanted to have this discussion, and Mr. Howe wanted to, to bring this to our attention, so we've had a healthy forty-five-minute discussion on it. Is there anything we need to do to wrap it up?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments, I have some more questions as well. So, thank you, Chairman. I would like to see the, the calculation process for the forty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents per ton. In fact, if you don't mind sending me the calculations for all of this, I'd like to, to go through that and understand exactly how this was all calculated. I, I don't understand how the cold mix is about the same, you know, our, our cold mix plant is nearly the same price per ton as the hot mix plant. Is that...
So, I guess, I would say, there's kind of a thing we need to talk a little bit about. It's an economies-of-scale thing. We would have this cold mix plant, and we probably need to run it to get what we need, you know, twenty days a year, and then it sits. And if we go to Cornejo, who's running plants at this point, almost twelve months out of the year, and they're running asphalt every day, the cost of the equipment is very, almost minor compared to the cost of materials that they're selling us. The second thing happens is, if, again, if you're Cornejo, you're bringing rock in by rail in your own cars, to your own yard. You're, you have supply lines that you own of materials. So, the economies-of-scale, whether it be commercial cold mix or commercial hot mix, is what I think pushes the pricing down, and that's something we can't beat. We're going to go out as much materials as we think we might be buying. What we need to do this is so minuscule in that marketplace that we get the lowest price for people that are willing to provide it to us. But, I think that, that's one of the problems with the cold mix plant, is we really can't make it economical. Perhaps if we were in a consortium with other people, and the volume of this thing was five times as much, but we'd still be small potatoes in the materials market.
So, so the forty-four dollars per ton, does that include the capital costs in any way? Or is that separate, completely separate from the, the materials and manufacturing cost?
Are you talking about the private sector?
No, I'm saying for the, for the, for option number two, does your price per ton include any type of capital cost buried into the price per ton?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I need to know that, because that's not clear here.
Okay, so what we'd do, would provide you the paper we did back in June, where that, I don't think we've changed that calculation from June, and so...
So, what's the price per ton when you subtract out the capital costs?
Jim, is this the document that you handed out, May eighteenth of two thousand and twenty?
No, this is this one we did last June.
Okay, there's, okay, remember that, okay, thank you.
I, it's going to take me a while to dig through that and find it.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make a request here, that we circle back and have a follow-up discussion on this, because we need some more data. And I don't think you, I appreciate the presentation today, but we don't have the data we need to make a decision today. But it's urgent, we don't want to put this off another year. So, I need to know what it costs.
We can get more data.
Commissioner Dennis actually asked for life cycle costs, I think that's a great way to, to approach this. Let's look at life cycle costs to maintain our one hundred and fifty miles over the next thirty years, and compare the different, the different methods, all, all the things we can calculate into that. We're talking about utility costs, and oil prices, and labor, and delivery, those all could be calculated into that. Life cycle costs, I have no question that the least expensive option on the sheet here is option number two. But let's find out if that's true. Let's look at life cycle cost for the next thirty years. I think that somebody, somebody ought to present, if you will, the assumptions and the, and the math to show us how that was calculated, but let's try to figure out, what is the least expensive option over the next thirty years? Life cycle costs. And by the way, if we don't do this, I think, I, I asked Director Spears a while back, that we are going to need to do some type of analysis on these roads, because if we don't have a way to take care of these roads, we will have to start taking them and tearing them out. And I hate to, I hate to say that, but we, if we can't maintain them, there's no other option. And so, just want to make a point, you know, some commission districts have a lot of these roads, some of them have less. I, I think it's important that we understand where the roads are. I'd like to maybe have that presented to us as well, where are these roads? So, we know what we're talking about. And then in terms of the fifteen-year payback, let me just make a point here, that forty-four seventy-eight times the twenty-two thousand tons is about a million dollars a year. Obviously, that, that includes the materials cost, but I don't think we spent a million dollars a year ever on our coal mix program. So, I, I don't understand how, how that was calculated either. That doesn't make sense to me, that we have a million dollars a year.
I do think that, that's mostly material cost, and so, we bought those materials for sixty years. They price change there from year to year, but that's, it's really pretty clean. It's materials and it's utilities, and then whatever you attribute to the payback of the plant, the plant capital cost itself.
Again, if we're not paving, we're not, not converting township roads, we're simply taking care of roads. If that's all we're doing, how much we need? When we actually had our R three forty-two program active, we estimated, I think it was three seventy-five, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for five miles. That was every other year when I first became a commissioner. That was about, a little bit, you know, about seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a mile to convert a township road. That included all the material to convert that road, and then I think there was additional costs for maintenance of other coal mix roads. So, I'm not suggesting we go back to that in any way. But if all we're doing is maintaining our roads, most of that cost, I think, would be, would be, would be in the construction of those roads, is not so much in, in maintenance of those roads. And so, we need to have an estimate, how many, how much material was needed to maintain these roads going forward. And I understand, Mr. Spears, that we will have to grind those roads down every so often, because you can't just add material forever, you have to grind them out at some point. But I understand that you can, might, might be able to add material three, or four, or five times before you have to grind that down. So, anyway, I think we need to have a life cycle cost, and I don't think we have that today. So, it is urgent, and Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask that we would get that data and bring it back here in a couple of weeks.
Okay, I think that, Tom, you can, you guys got some things you can do, and as far as I'm concerned, you could bring it to each of us individually, or, or two-two-ones or something, so we can have that information, then we can determine at that time if we want to get together and have a summary workshop, or a summary staff meeting on it, so...
I just have one more quick question, sorry. So, I mean, we're not the only county in the United States that does the road paving. One thing that we haven't talked about, which we do talk about in all other aspects of county government, is what are other counties doing, how are they handling this road construction? I mean, I would, if we're going to talk about data, let's talk about that. Let's talk about what other counties do, are they going green, are they doing things in a more green fashion? If we're going to talk thirty years, then we need to talk about that, so I'd like that data.
Okay.
I just had, I guess I just, you just reminded me of another, another comment I'd like to make.
I've got an eleven o'clock meeting, so I'll, I'll let you all finish up, then you can be the chair. Okay, thank you.
Final comment was, we, we had a KAC conference here in Wichita a while back, and I, there was a lot of vendors there that, that have a lot of stuff they're trying to sell, counties like Sedgwick County. And I talked to numerous of those vendors, explained to them our situation with how many miles of roads we have, and our current situation, that we don't have a pug mill, and we're using commercially available stuff that, to maintain these roads. And I asked them, what, what do you recommend going forward? And without exception, every one of them said, you guys need to buy a pug mill. They said, there is no other way to do this. And so, I, I, I'd like to reflect on the fact that I think David Spears, I've had numerous conversations with him, he's a director of Public Works, has said numerous times, there is no other, there is no other economical option to take care of these roads. So, I think we should take, I know people like to respect our, our, our directors of our agencies. Director David Spears of Public Works has, has stated that very, very plainly today, and he's stated that in the past. I think we have plenty of evidence to say that this is an option. We really need to seriously consider and find a way to, to implement, so I'll say that, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Just want to make sure I'm clear, Commissioner. I'm hearing Commissioner Dennis ask for a more thorough analysis of the road condition on one hundred and fifty miles. Commissioner Howe, I think I'm hearing you say you want analysis on per, per mile costs associated with the various options that Mr. Weber has presented today. Am I hearing both of those correctly? And then I'm hearing Commissioner Cruz ask for peer analysis. So, is that, we should gather all three of those types of pieces of data? And then, I think I heard Chairman say before he walked out, two-two-one this with all of you, or do we want to reconvene back in this kind of setting again?
Let me clarify what... Okay. But, you also, I want to see if anybody's interested in...
I also have that down, Commissioner, the concept of partnership also, yes. All four of you, four of you have different kinds of asks here.
I'm not talking about a plan that would actually identify each mile and exactly what we'd do to each mile over thirty years. I'm simply saying, if a hundred and fifty miles worth of roads, what's our plan generally? How often are we going to visit those roads? You put down materials how many times, you have to grind it down, you seal code, what's our total maintenance cost of one hundred and fifty miles using different, these different technologies? I don't need it, I don't need the details per mile, I just need to know, generally speaking, what is our financial plan over the next thirty years?
Okay.
Got what you need? Any other questions? All right, I think we're done. Have a good day.